Back to slide number two. We can answer your questions as we go along. A couple, I'll call it housekeeping parts on here. You'll notice in the presentation that we have this evening and what you have in front of you, that there are going to be places in there where the wording is hot pink. What that means is that it's slight changes in this presentation compared to what was posted online for the meeting. It doesn't change the big picture. For example, it may have been the number two and we changed it to the word two. There's also one summary slide that we added in. Many of these changes are because we were attending governor's budget meetings even this morning. And we wanted to make sure that you all have the latest and greatest information. The governor released the budget January 10th. We attended a school services workshop on the 18th. Billy attended a workshop last Thursday. We both attended a workshop this morning. So the information is coming out very quickly and we want to be able to share it with you. And as we said, the potential implications on our budget. As such, when we are sharing information, it's always based upon what we know right now. And things will change and we'll, we'll mention that throughout the, the presentation. Okay? Any questions about what kind of our format today before we begin? No? Okay. Nina, can you share the presentation, please? Excuse me. Thank you. Next slide. And next slide. So the purpose. We've broken our conversation out into four sections. First, we'll talk about just some foundational understanding of California school finance. So we're talking our terms and kind of the process. Then we'll provide a summary of the governor's budget proposal. Then we want to take a peek at our fiscal health with what we know right now, just to give us kind of a introduction or preview of what we might see in our second interim report. And then definitely talk about next steps. Next slide. Always start with alignment to the strategic plan. We're talking finances. And so every bit of our finances go towards supporting students. Therefore, everything in our strategic plan. Next slide. Every pillar in our strategic plan is touched, of course, by finances. Next slide. We always bring the budget cycle while we're getting familiar with this cycle. We are at the budget study session. We've got just a couple more points to go in this cycle and then it repeats. Next slide. Lots of acronyms. Sometimes we talk, oh, this is Ed speak because we'll hear all the terms on the education side. There's also budget speak. And there are a lot of acronyms that we may say, but we wanted to make sure that this slide was in here. So we can refer back to it when necessary. Next slide. So we're also breaking the presentation out. So you don't have to listen to me all the time. So Billy is going to take this first section on understanding school finance.
Right. Next slide, please. Budget oversight and reporting. We're going to start with a basic overview of budgets. Is policy. Lines of the board's policy, district goals, strategic goals. It's a detailed plan for how we're going to spend our money or pay for activities over a specific period of time. Usually the fiscal year. It's a guide for admins to make decisions and actions throughout the year. We constantly refer to it when we're making purchases or planning. We go through it often, as do many of the admins. So communicates the strengths and challenges of our program. So show our deficiencies, where we're spending too much, but we're receiving any of the challenges we're having. Next slide, please, Nina. The county office of education, Yolo County Office of Education has oversight over our financials. They review our budgets and interim reports. Just yesterday, Veronica, the director of external business services, sent us the, her review of our first interim reports. We will review that and answer any questions she has. And then she will make a determination if we can meet our financial obligations. The county also reviews our CBAs or collective bargaining agreements and any non voter approved debts. Next slide, please. The budget reporting cycle starts with the adopted budget. Starting to work on that now, back for next year. July 1st through June 30th. After about four months, we have our first interim reporting on changes that have happened since the beginning of the year. Staffing changes, budgets, new grants, all of that is incorporated into the budget. We present that by December 15th. And we have the second interim report, which we will be bringing to you guys shortly. That covers three months after the first interim. Depending on how the second interim is certified, there may be a third interim, which isn't on here. And that would be due June 1st. We usually don't have a third interim report because, as you'll find out in a couple of slides about budget certification, you have to be qualified or negative certified in order to do a third interim. It brings us to estimated actuals, which is done in combination with the adopted budget. It's due July 1st every year. And then after the close of the year, we have three months or so to do the unaudited actuals, which is how we actually finished.
Billy, for folks who may, may be new to it, when you say qualified, how many years is that?
Next slide.
Two. We'll cover that in a couple of slides here.
Very important.
It is.
Next slide, please. We'll talk about it right now.
Yeah.
I didn't want to tee you up.
Yeah, you did. You did.
Interim budget certification. So our, this, the budgets are certified in one of three categories, either positive, qualified, or negative. Positive means we are going to meet our financial obligations for the current year or for the two subsequent fiscal years, which is where we are and want to be. Or there's qualified, which may need our financial obligations for the current year or two subsequent fiscal years. And then there's also the negative, where we are not going to meet it. We're unable to meet our obligations for the next, the current year or two subsequent fiscal years.
So total of three years, including the one that we're in?
Yes. Moments of the budget. Funds, MYPs, which are multi-year projections and ending balances. We manage a total budget, not just the general fund. Often talking about Fund O1, the general fund. That's typically the focus. It's the biggest pot of money that we have. But there are other funds that we have on our books, such as the charter school, Washington Middle College High School. They're not in our general fund. They're tracked separately. We also have the dollar education. We have the food services cafeteria fund, early education, deferred maintenance, and then OPEB, the other post employment benefits. We also have some facilities funds for building the measures, debt service, and then trust and agency funds, which are like scholarship type funds.
And it's important to just, just for, for history purpose, we actually did the charter school special fund to make sure that they, they were viable on their own. So there wasn't an encroachment on our general fund. So that was a very clear ask way back when, when we actually became a dependent charter. So just the history there.
Great. Next slide, please. Types of revenue. There's an unrestricted revenue, which is, as in the name, unrestricted. You could use it on about anything. And then we have restricted revenue, which are used for specific items. Grant funds, little bond funds, there's, you know, rules that we have to follow and allowable uses. Next slide, please. Local control funding formula, LCFF. That's our biggest revenue source. Start with a base grant. And then we get additional money, supplemental concentration funds for targeted students. And that'll get us to our dollar per ADA that the district perceives.
Can I expand on this a little bit? So when we think of the targeted students, those are our students who are identified as being foster youth, homeless, qualifying for the free or reduced price meal program, or English language learners. You might hear the term unduplicated. And so what that means is, let's say I'm a student, I'm a foster youth, and I'm also an English learner. So the district doesn't get funding for me based upon two categories. It's just one. I am, I'm one student. And so that's why it's unduplicated. But we get adjustments, the supplemental grants, excuse me, supplemental grant and the concentration grant, so that we get additional monies to help provide for the additional support. We need to be able to help our students in these particular situations.
And the concentration grant percentages?
65%. It was just recently, I think it was last year or the year before, increased from 55%.
But we've always qualified for concentration.
We have.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, let me explain that. What that means is if 65% of our students are identified as targeted students. Thank you.
So we get a lot of money based on the equity formula of LCFF.
Interesting term, equity. Yes. Yes, it is.
There are basic A schools, sort of a way about us.
Exactly.
To be really direct. So Beverly Hills feels some, some way about us.
Exactly. Are we able, do you know how to move the, that at the top? Can hide it?
Oh, that's better.
That's better. Not sure where to.
Get something to do with the concentration.
I think you can go to the, maybe just put it in the top left-hand corner. Just keep it there for now. Okay. And then look out, there you go. Okay. And then you can use your arrow up and down button. It's a preview to everything.
And we're done.
Thank you, Nina. Yes.
Okay. General fund, revenue and expense types. Numbers up at the top are at the first interim, so at the end of October. LCFF money, salaries, utilities, department budgets. That's main part of money. Home school transportation's in there. Teen restricted maintenance. And then you have supplemental concentration, 16.2 million. All of that is in the LCAP. Federal funds, which are the title monies, which are restricted. We have a lot of state funds, a lot of the one-time money that we just are starting to receive and have received the last couple of years. And then local funds, transfers in, interest and other local revenue, local grants, like plus reimbursements, local things we get. Next slide.
I'm sorry, may I expand on this? And luckily, you know, I warned Billy that I would probably hop in. So when we're looking at our supplemental and concentration, as Vice President Long shared, we get, we get a lot of money. We get a good amount of money. When we're looking at our supplemental and concentration and we're thinking of the plan that we implement to do this, that's our LCAP. That's the money that we're using to be able to support our targeted students. And so we have the list of, of the types of expenses we have here to support it. So that 16.2 million is how much we would plan to spend in one year to support our students through that funding. Not that we don't use other funding, but that is, that is specifically for our targeted students.
And, okay. My fault, because I may or may not have helped draft some of the LCFF language. We are one of the, the very model districts that actually use a supplements on concentration grants towards our targeted areas. And kind of the other day when we talked about like ELL, we actually poured a lot of our money. That makes a difference when we actually do that. Just because a lot of the children's rights advocates and attorneys, we fought for equity this, this formula so that we could actually create the parity in access of opportunity.
Okay.
Not all districts do that.
Okay. We use our revenue wisely. Two major principles in budgeting. Number one, don't use one-time funds to pay for things that eat. One-time funds are one-time.
So no board bammers.
What's that?
No food for board members.
No, but we do want to make sure we don't buy something that's going to require maintenance or replacement or something down the road. And we're not going to have a funding source to do that. And principle number two, five dollars first if they apply. Want to use the most restrictive items first. Of course, use more freely and more items. Budget can. 78% of our budget is salaries and benefits. As a first interim, which is where these percents come from, we were at 77%. The state average is 80 to 85%. But it's, it's a major part of our expenditures. So we need to make sure that our positions are correct and paid appropriately. So we need a fully functioning position control system. Next. Position control system is how we maintain all of our board authorized positions. HR hires employees into only the authorized positions. And we pay only personnel that HR has put into those authorized positions. So we're not paying people who aren't in positions. Next, please. Multi-year projections. Lot of that goes into making these. Make them for three to five years out. And they change frequently. We incorporate a lot of the information from sources like the governor's budget, school services.
And to expand, I love how you look over at me. Like I know it's coming. To expand on the multi-year projections, if we go back a few slides and we looked at our certification and we talked about the certification for the next two years, it's certifying that our multi-year projections for the next two years are accurate and indicate that we can meet our financial obligations. And that makes us positive certification, which we want and we are qualified or negative certification. So doing the multi-year projections are so incredibly important for us to be accurate and have really dialed in assumptions, really reliable assumptions. I want to expand on the, the last part on here. Projections will change anytime the underlying factors change. There's a change in the economy. There's, we, we add a position to our, our team. That's going to change our multi-year projections. Sometimes we'll say, sometimes we'll say, yeah, our projections that we did today are going to be different tomorrow because there's a time card that comes in or there's a program, you know, something's changing, but it's based upon the best information we have at the time.
So also, I don't know if we did this last budget cycle, but usually we look at, for projections purposes, we do our this year plus two, but then we also looked at plus two more. We did our projections for five years out.
Yeah.
Because I think it's just, we thought it was best practices.
Absolutely.
But I'm hazy on whether or not we did the plus five last time. But I do believe that that is good practice.
Billy and I, we do our projections solidly based upon five years. And that, I believe, has been our practice here in our district. We're required to report the three years.
Right.
But it's, it's just good practices, we've said, to look further out. Your five is a real guess, except if it's really showing what things are going to go down. If you see that now, then that's something we need to bring potential solutions to you to be able to give us direction on.
Great.
Thank you, Billy.
Well, your projections are a district budget must demonstrate that it can meet its final obligations. Just said. And they show the impact of these positions on the financial future. Even balance. This is treated as a one-time fund. It includes our inventory revolving cash that we would have a reserve for economic uncertainties, a 6% reserve, the 3% required, and then the 3% that the board has asked us to hold additionally. It also includes assignments and commitments, such as what we've committed to deferred maintenance, to OPEB, and any other one-time projects we have.
Any questions? I have one, just because it goes back and I think it fits here to ask it. Not to use one-time money on things that eat, as you said. But we do know that we have grant funding that is meant to serve kids right now with positions. And we know that there's some one-time money, you know, for supporting kids that is being used to kind of get everyone up to speed right now on people. So I think we had talked in the past about maybe, and it was also asked of us highlighting which positions are grant funded, just so that we all have a good understanding of that. So we know that long-term, we either find a new funding source or we, you know, are just aware of the impact. So I don't know if that's been, I, it doesn't seem like it was sent on the organization chart, but maybe it could be done somewhere for us, just so that we all make sure we know. Because I think I could take some guesses and remember off the top of my head, but I might not be 100% correct. And so I think that would be helpful for us to just know which, to have that understanding.
You know, what's general fund, what's grant funded, what's supplemental funded?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can be well versed as you think about the budget in terms of, these are positions that we want to find additional money for if this funding runs out or whatnot.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the governor's budget proposal. Next slide. There are five major themes to the governor's budget proposal. One is business as usual, a softening economy, where there's some maintaining yet trimming of some programs. We now get to start focusing on non-COVID related crises. And then also, based upon the conversations we've had and the information we've, we've received, the fiscal experts, and I would agree with them, are saying that it's really balanced a little precariously. We'll talk about some of the major shifts and differences between the Department of Finance, which is the governor's forecast, financial forecaster, versus the LAO, the legislative.
Analyst.
Thank you. I'm like, the LAO, that's just a word. Who's the legislators.
The acronyms.
And that one's not on here. It might be in your acronym. Add it.
I've just got many acronyms.
It was funny because I was like, I would see it on here and I'm like, okay, looking. Not there, good to know, have to ask about that later. Because we will get into budget speak and, and that's, that's not helpful. We're here to help, but make it understandable and digestible. But, you know, you have the Department of Finance, DOF, Legislative Analyst Office, LAO, who's the legislatures analyst. And there's some differences. There's about a $14 million difference in their revenue projections. It's not entirely uncommon that they're going to have differences, but with a softening economy and knowing that. Hello?
This is budget study session.
Room 19. Are you here for the Mejor Z meeting?
I'm here for the CBO.
Okay. Room 19?
This is it?
No, this is 75. We'll help you.
The new will show them.
You might want to drive.
We'll help you. He's, he's going to, he's going to take. But okay. The CBO, the Oversight Committee. Exactly. And then like, you are here and here's all of.
Office is not super efficient.
I lost, I was saying. So there's, there's differences in there that need to be discussed. If we think of our budget cycle, we're in January. There's going to be a lot of changes by the time we get to an active, an enacted budget in July. And so they'll have their conversations and we'll see how that gap changes between now and then.
Additionally, the Department of Finance budget reflects the governor's perspective. The LAO represents a bipartisan, nonpartisan perspective.
Absolutely.
Now they're funded out of some.
More conservative in the way they produce numbers. The governor's is skewed or the Department of Finance is skewed for a more, you know, whatever the image that the governor wants to project versus what the image may actually be.
Absolutely.
I guess fiscal revenues could.
Well said.
Forecasting is a tricky thing. Forecasting into two years when we don't know what's happening.
It is.
And so at the end of the day, it's negotiation between the legislature and the governor, what the actual projected revenues are. But if we remember the great recession, they both landed on something and we had to cut in the middle of the year across the board. So they could have landed on something and be totally wrong because the market crashes.
We all have PTSD from that.
And that's when we got laid off. So that's when you, yeah, that's when you got laid off.
Yeah.
The school districts ended up having to eat part of their, what they're owed to them.
Yeah.
We did.
Anyways. Yeah. So on the next slide, we'll talk about a little bit more of the state budget. And, you know, even though we think that the budget is a little precarious, we're not in such a tough position California-wide that if something like that, like that happens, that we'll be in a situation like we were in 2008 and 2009, where we had to have conversations about, you know, reducing pay, furloughs, et cetera. Next slide, please. So now we think of six themes for the state economy. They're stifling growth. Even though we have persistent inflation and rising interest rates and, and supply chain issues, what we're seeing is that it is affecting our growth in just kind of California-wide. There's a potential of recession. We've been talking about this. You've probably been hearing about this for quite some time. But the governor really isn't forecasting a recession. And it may be for, as Trustee Pizzotti said, image issues. And those are the things we have to contend with when we're looking at a budget. We've heard before about a revenue shortfall. For those of us who were at the California School Board Association meeting, the finance update, or even, you know, back, back in November, when the LAO presented their report, they were talking about a big budget gap of over 20 some odd million dollars or billion dollars. And we still see that. So if we have a revenue gap, we're going to have a gap in our ability to be able to pay our bills, pay our, for our programs. And then one great thing about this, this proposed budget is what I was saying is, if something awful happens, hopefully not as bad as COVID, because of the governor not tapping into the reserves. Remember when we talked about our ending fund balance, our reserves? The state has reserves too. And thankfully, they're not, the proposal is not tapping into those reserves right now. So if something happens, we still have that cushion. We call it the rainy day fund to be able to help protect us if things don't go completely as horrible as, as they could be. And of course, the governor's is forecasting a slowdown in economy as we're seeing. Today at our morning meeting, we were talking about it, the, the budget meeting, how we should be getting new economic information even as early as tomorrow. And interest rates might come up a little bit more to kind of help slow the economy. And interest rates might come up a little bit more to kind of help slow the economy. But the financial experts need to be careful that they don't dip us into a recession. So it's really something that we need to keep an eye on so that when we're thinking of our forecasts and our multi-year projections and the information that we bring to you, we have the information we have right now, but we need to continue to bring this information to you because things might change. It might make a dip that we all need to be prepared to watch to be able to support our students. Next slide. Let's talk Prop 98, Proposition 98. We often, we often call it Prop 98, Funding and the Education Budget. Prop 98 is the, the proposition that really says what the funding is for school districts. And so we'll also just say our Prop 98 funding. And sometimes we say that in the sense of our, you know, basically our education funding. It's kind of synonymous. So we're seeing that in the budget, that the Prop 98 resources grow leaner in the governor's budget as do the proposed investments in our K-12 education. The cost of living adjustment, our COLA, it helps to maintain the purchasing power of LCFS and really took the center stage. And we'll talk about the 8.13% that's, that's proposed in the budget a little bit later. The governor still focuses on his priority programs. So transitional kindergarten and then also our after-school programs in the sense of helping to make sure that our California families have quality education and enrichment programs for our students, but also for those working parents, they have good childcare for their students. It's not just a daycare. They get education, they get quality programs to be able to support our students throughout the day. And we as school districts have the opportunity to be a part of that. And the governor is really focusing monies and programs and support so that we can support our kids, or I like to call them our littles, our little littles, all the way up. Education equity, we'll talk about that in a little bit, where there's a proposal called the Equity Multiplier to help us to provide great learning programs for our students and close those achievement gaps. But wait, the governor also talks about decreasing funding and sweeping some fundings, particularly in our arts and music block grant, which was proposed last year. We'll talk a bit about that. Next slide. Last year and some of the previous years, we talked about a reserve cap. Just a little bit ago, Billy talked about our ending fund balance, also known as our reserves. And our district has done an amazing job. I really appreciate how you all made it the board policy to not have the minimum 3%, to add that extra 3% as that safeguard for us to help protect us should we have some economic uncertainties or something happen. However, there is a cap now on what, how much reserves we can have, which is that 10% cap. We met that cap this year and for the foreseeable future, we have to cap our ending balance, our reserves at 10%. What we did last year, which I so appreciate, and we're, we're planning for this year, is whatever was above 10%, we made those investments in those other funds that Billy talked about into our deferred maintenance, into our OPEB, which is our post-employee, basically our post, our retirement planning. We're making those investments so when we have those tough times, we're able to support our district on our reserves, which is indeed counted as one-time.
And I always ask this, it's just good to know, 10% covers how much of our?
Operating expenses. I will get back to you on that. It's okay.
It always says like a month or something, but.
Yeah, typically our, our 6% reserves, 3% were, they hope to cover one month. 6% maybe two months. And when we say one month, it's not our operating expenses. We need to make sure that we pay our employees so that they can, they can eat, they can have shelter, they can, they can do what they need to do. That is, we've got to make sure that we pay them. We got to make sure that we pay our employees.
Because again, Great Recession, cutting budgets in the middle of the year was not fun.
It's tough. Next slide. So let's talk about our LCFF revenue, our Local Control Funding Formula revenue, which is the primary source of revenue for our district. The governor proposes, proposes an 8.13% COLA. This is huge compared to what we've received in the past. We projected, I think, was it a six or a six, a 5% COLA for next year, for '23, '24? But now we're looking at 8.13%. Is this going to happen based upon the financial indicators? We're going to be pretty close or right on this 8.3% COLA.
Remind me, do we do it against, I always forget this, mess it up. Do we do it against the CNI or CP? So the Consumers' Necessities Index, or the consumer.
Price.
Next, price. Did we do the CP? So the cost of goods.
Exactly.
Versus, yeah, okay.
The governor also proposes this Equity Multiplier and we'll, we'll go a little bit deeper in this on the next slide, but it's basically creating accountability. It's, it's helping to chose, close achievement gaps and helping, helping us to provide more resources for students at need. Okay? We'll talk more on the next slide. Total increase in funding is about $5 billion. And then also the COLA does apply to categorical programs. When we say this part right here, it's very important and we're very happy about it because we could be in a situation where we might get the 8.13% increase to our LCFF, our general funding, but we also have to think about our special education programs, our cafeteria fund. Those programs are not always getting the COLA. Thankfully, in this budget, it is because the cost of goods, they're increasing for all of our programs, for everything that we do. So getting that extra funding in those programs is very important. Next slide. Let's talk about this LCFF Equity Multiplier. This is new in the budget. Billy attended a, a meeting on Thursday. We were at a meeting today to kind of get the history on what this is all about, which I think is very fascinating and it's a nice look into the inner workings of.
Dr. Shirley Weber.
Exactly. Of, of what the governor needs to do to be able to do great things for kids. So as Vice President Wong shared, Doctors Shirley Weber, the mother and the daughter, had a bill to focus on achievement gaps, and I'm really summarizing, for a specific student group. When we kind of peel back the onion on the legis, the proposal, the bill, it really ended up really focusing on achievement for African-American students. However, putting a bill forth and signing a law that is race-based is a no-go. That's, that's not something constitutionally we can do and it's something that the governor said, I, I can't sign that. However, based upon what I've learned today, the governor said, I will address it in a different way. And the governor has put in this Equity Multiplier. Unfortunately, or fortunately, you could see it on both sides, the Equity Multiplier, it does add $300 million to the LCFF to close achievement gaps. And it was based upon the prior commitment. But this Equity Multiplier is based upon the percentage of free students at particular schools. So schools, elementary schools that are 90% free and high schools that are 85% free, they'll get monies for the equity, based upon the Equity Multiplier. Unfortunately, that does not cover all of the schools that would have been covered in the proposed bill by Doctors Weber. And so. Two, Riverbank and? Westfield.
Of course.
Exactly. So we think that there's going, still going to be a lot of conversation around this. This may or may not go forth as proposed in the governor's budget because there's, there's a lot of interest and I would say, venture to say, a lot of passion around this particular issue that I'm curious to see how it really pans out for us.
I would think that it's going to get lowered if anything. Because I'm, just from the interests that I've heard from many of the members that have schools in their district that don't qualify, that want them to qualify, and they have, you know, they have a certain amount of leverage to push forward, especially if the governor is, you know, borrowing and shifting funds and doing a smoke and mirrors budget. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna ask for, maybe bring it down to 85 or something. But whatever, I, I could easily see the political, you know, lawsuit being made on this one.
Go, sorry.
Go ahead.
When you said 85% free, what does that mean? Very, very good question. Budget speak. Eighty, excuse me, 85% of the students qualify to receive free meals. Okay. Based upon their household.
Now they're all free, so it's.
So, all free. So we have students who qualify for full-price meals based upon their household income, reduced-price meals, or to receive meals at no cost or for free.
So even though it's free meals for all, so just background nerd, perhaps, or maybe or may not have been part of any of this, is that we actually do, Department of Education, Department of Social Services does a data match between the public assistance programs and social services. So when you're on CalWorks, food stamps, SSI, they do a match with our student population. So that's how you get the percentage of free and reduced based off of those, quite frankly, the, the public assistance programs. What we're, what we also are trying to do, it really is our undocumented families who actually had to come in and fill out paperwork. Even though everybody gets free lunch, it's why we do the push for the paperwork because things like this, things like the unduplicated, they're not captured because they're not on government assistance, right?
I know some parents are hesitant to do that because of the fact that they are undocumented.
But there are laws to protect them, like to, I, 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 yeah, we get that across. No, 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 that's, yeah, across, it's been an issue across the state and a complaint. And so I used to work for National Center for Youth Law, protecting rights of children and families. And so under a, a different administration, being the 45s, or not 45s, you know, whatever, MAGA administration, wouldn't have been different. Laws actually do protect schools from not disclosing that. But it's, it's an education effort and I think it might be a community, maybe open to educating, educating community. Just because again, I, I work for a children's rights organization and those are the things that we had to like, listen, like, we're trying to get more access, but understand, and, and totally understand concern of them.
Right. Handing the ticket to the ones that I had to do.
Yeah. Yeah, not good. And thankfully, we have lots of laws around it. And I think, you know, my, my former food service director had just snapped on. It's very important that we know and our community knows that we cannot ask your documentation status on the applications for free or reduced-price meals. I think that's very important.
We passed a resolution on it too.
Very big resolution on that.
That's grounded, that's grounded in the laws that protect their rights. So, but it still doesn't stop. There is still perception, you're right.
Right. And I was just going to say, part of, on that form, we are asking for a social security number. And when you're on there and you're like, nope, I'm good, because I'm not trying to have that. Yeah, we don't eat, like, not we, like I do it, but I know people look at it and are like. We have to ask for it, they do not have to provide it.
Right. They can provide.
There's a part where you mark it saying you're choosing not to, but.
It's so suspicious.
It's so suspicious when you.
So, yeah, so education.
No, if I may take a moment, you mark that and most districts are sized and even smaller, it's an electronic process. You can do it online. Even when we receive the, the forms, we put it through an electronic process and we absolutely have verification. So there's a time point where we do need to go back and do a verification of a random sample to verify the income information. But there are safeguards to be able to put in that that form is, is just processed. And so I think it's incredibly important for us to help families to feel comfortable completing that form because the form isn't just about receiving a meal. It helps our families and our students to qualify for some amazing programs. It helps us to bring these amazing programs to our students. Got a question?
Oh, no, I mean, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, it was just, I was just clarifying as we're looking at these numbers and I did hear you say that it's 90 higher threshold for high school, but that Yolo High School doesn't qualify?
No, it doesn't. 85% for, 85% of the students qualify for free meals. And no, Yolo does not qualify.
Or income threshold for free. Everybody gets free meals.
Exactly.
Yeah.
For the purpose of conversation.
It is weird the way we're still talking in this way because it's confusing to the public, to everybody, really, the way this.
85% of Yolo students don't, it's less than that?
Yes, it is.
85% is high.
That is high.
Very high. The closest schools are either probably Westfield.
If you look at it, it's because of the fact that their numbers are low. Right?
Yeah.
Because they have, they have like 100 kids and so the.
85 of them have to be free. Yeah. But it's telling of, of our Riverbank and our Westfield, like that's just high. Yeah.
Which we.
Regardless of whether or not the paperwork is listed qualified.
Yeah. So next slide. When we talk about multi-year projections, when we talk about forecasting, it's very important, as I shared earlier, to get reliable sources of financial information for our projections. We use the School Services of California. They are our go-to trusted resource for projections. We always analyze it for, you know, so, you know, to make sure we think that that makes sense for our district. What's highlighted here are our planning factors. And so what that means, when we're creating our budgets for next years and the next few years, we use these planning factors in order to create those budgets. I highlighted the 23, 24 because that's what we're focusing on. You see the 8.13% COLA. You see the California CPI Consumer Price Index. You see the unemployment insurance, all of the factors that we need to take into account when we're planning our budget. Next slide. Wanted to take a peek at what is the effect of the proposed 8.13% COLA on our LCFF funding? So we want to take a moment and kind of break down the LCFF funding. There's several factors that go into the, how we get our funding for LCFF. So first, at the very top left, we have our grade span. Or it talks about our grade span, which we get funding based upon our transitional kindergarten, grades K through three, grades four through six, seven through eight, and nine through 12. And you see that there's differences there. We have our 22, 23 base grant per ADA, average daily attendance, the number of students who actually come to school every single day. We have enrollment, but we're funded on the number of students who actually come to school are ADA. So.
For now.
For now.
For now.
So.
We were having less.
Start with this year's base grant and that's when we start putting in those planning factors that we talked, discussed on the previous slide. So if we were to take TK and we said that we received this year 9,166, 9,166, I almost said 1,000. We add in our COLA, so that's adding in about 745. So it gives us, gives us a new base grant of about 9,900. But then we have what's called a GSA, grade span adjustment. So for our little, our younger kids, there's more investment to be able to support our students at this grade level. And then for our older kids, our high school kids, we get a grade span adjustment to be able to support their programs that we, the programs that we want to provide in our high school. So we get, um, about a thousand dollars, um, for our TKs. But because we are new to implementing TK, the governor has added what's called a TK add-on. Because we know that this is new, they know it's new, so we're getting a little bit extra. Okay? So all of this changes the base grant, remember the little slide with the happy kids, the base grant for our students. So TK's base grant goes from ninety-one hundred to thirteen thousand. Of a base grant, okay? And we see across the board, our base grant for our students is increasing. Yay, that's really great. We add in, remember, we talked about our supplemental and concentration for our targeted students, so we add that in.
I'm about to cough.
Okay, I wasn't sure if a question was coming. Next slide.
I can explain it, but. You guys don't want me nerd talk all day long.
But we wanted to take a moment to add a, a note about COLA and declining enrollment. Many people hear eight point one three percent COLA or whatever the COLA is. And think that we are getting an automatic eight point one three percent increase to our funding. It doesn't work that way. Every district has to do the analysis to identify exactly what that means. For their district. Our district's declining enrollment. And so this slide is very pertinent for us to kind of work through it. So let's take a sample district and we're looking at our, um, four through sixth graders and there's a two percent declining enrollment. So you have ten thousand students and a two percent decline enrollment. Now we're at ninety-eight hundred students. When we were at two, the ten thousand students, the base grant was ninety-three oh four, that was about ninety-three million dollars. But with a decline to ninety-eight hundred students. We have, um, everything added in with the eight percent COLA. Now we're getting about ten thousand students, or I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars per student. Not per, you know, not per ten thousand. Now we're basing it upon ninety-eight hundred because of the two percent decline. We're getting about ninety-eight million dollars. The increase is about five point five million dollars. The increase percent is not eight point one three. We're increasing at five point six. Questions about this? So I, I think it was, uh, you know, something that we also need to make sure that we share when we're talking about our budget. And the, the increased COLA or the changes that may come. I will take an eight point one three percent COLA absolutely because it can help our students and staff. However, we're not likely to get eight point one three percent increase to our funding overall. We have to go in and do that analysis for our district. Next slide.
But we're also, just to clarify, to get clear, able to potentially reduce. Because you don't need as many staff members, essentially, when you have less children, depending.
They came in perfect class size.
Yeah, exactly.
And the TK bump, because you actually have need, need more adults in that classroom. That's actually, if you do the math.
I know.
It doesn't cover it.
And the, I saw we're talking later about that too, right? Cause the facility is. That's a lot of things we need to do for them.
Exactly, exactly. So the next slide, um, we aren't getting any relief for rising pension costs. So not that long ago, um, in our governor's budgets, we would see some help for rising pension costs. Um, but we don't see that.
But not me. Every other state doesn't see.
Where we're really concerned is our CALPERS, our retirement system for our classified, um, employees. Our California Public Employees Retirement System. I'll have to, I'll have to pull out my cheat sheet, my acronym cheat sheet as well. When we're looking at the chart, at our first interim projections for twenty-two, twenty-three. We projected that the employer contribution to retirement for our classified employees, our employees who participate in CALPERS. Would be twenty-five point two percent. The new projection is twenty-seven percent. By twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at twenty-eight percent. These costs are going up to be able to support. Our classified employees, our employees who participate in CALPERS. So that's something that we absolutely need to pay attention to. For STIRS, which is our teachers' retirement, we see that steady. Um, but we want to be mindful of these costs and Billy will talk about the potential impact on our budget later on in our presentation. Next slide. Remember how we talked about, um, there are sweeps and decreases in other programs? Last year, we received, um, or in the budget, it was, um, an allocation for the arts, music and instruction. Uh, material block grant. The governor is proposing reducing it by about thirty percent this year. Um, in order to, what we believe, in order to support other programs. From what we're hearing, this thirty percent reduction, um, is also to help the equity multiplier and help fund that.
And the, and the voters voted for the proposition.
Next slide.
I mean.
You are teeing me up. Next slide. Exactly, exactly. So when we're looking at the arts and music block grant. Um, the current legislation in the, the box that circled shows that we're supposed to get the money this year. We've already received half of our allocation. I believe it was how much, Billy?
About two million.
About two million. So this year, we're slotted to receive four million. The governor's proposing to cut it. But yet, we're supposed to get our, all of our allocation for this by the end of the year. There's gonna be more conversations related to this. Okay, next slide. Conversation is about the Proposition Twenty-eight. Our vote, our California voters passed Proposition Twenty-eight in the November election. What Proposition, um, Twenty-eight does is it's, it's dedicated funding to support arts, music and education. Primarily, um, and we'll talk about it in the, uh, the next slide, to support staffing, okay? Um, I've read a few things about the cut to, the block grant is also used to support the arts and music. Since we're getting this funding, all of this, we just need to keep watch on. What I'm most curious about is what we discussed on the previous slide where we are already slotted to receive our allocation. And that means our payment, for lack of better words, this year. But this is for the next year's budget. So a lot of conversations are gonna happen on this one. Fortunately or unfortunately, our district, because we're using our other one-time money, as Billy said. Use your most restricted first, we haven't really made a plan to touch this money yet. Um, I do have colleagues who had the plan and they are moving on this and I'm really concerned about them. Um, because they made commitments and we've got to see how this is going to affect them. Next slide. Let's dig a little bit more into the Proposition Twenty-eight. Um, this slide has a lot of detailed information for you. I won't go into all of the details. But I think the last, um, two areas, the green areas, is that it funds distributed to the district. Seventy percent, um, is based on the share of statewide enrollment in preschool through grade twelve. And thirty percent is based on the share of low-income students. So again, it's looking at being able to support our, our students identified as low-income. And to bring these great programs in for our kids. Again, focusing, the primary focus is on making sure that we have the staffing. Next slide. Let's talk enrollment. Enrollment ADA. We're funded on average daily attendance. Of course, we need the enrollment to be able to get to our average daily attendance. Over the past several years, this shows enrollment declines. We're experiencing, experiencing it and most districts are experiencing it. Um, later on in our presentation, we'll share our enrollment projections, but I think the main thing for this, um, bit of information is statewide. Um, we're seeing an enrollment decline through, through most sectors in our state or most places in our state. Next slide. Universal Transitional Kindergarten. This was year one. We implemented, we added, um, more TK students to our district. And next year, we're slat- we're slotted to add, um, even more students to our district. So, um, students who are four-year-olds whose birthday, fifth birthday occurs between September second and April second. They'll get to be able to join us in our TK programs. Next slide. We want to be mindful though, because we talked about that extra funding that we received. We talked about how the TK funding is related to our LCFF. But there are very strict requirements related to this TK program. There's requirements for our teachers and their education. There's requirements for the class size ratio. So how many students per teacher, based upon what we're hearing right now. Next year, the ratio will be twelve to one. Previously, and at first interim. Um, the information we had at that time, we were looking at ten to one. If this holds true, that's great that we're twelve to one because then we don't have to add another, um, person into the classroom. But we really need to keep a watch on this because there's a lot of time between now and the enacted budget. And we absolutely need to prepare our staffing and prepare our classes to be able to support our students and our teachers in our TK. Um, there's also stiff penalties if we don't meet the class size amounts. So in our collective bargaining agreements, our CBAs, districts can negotiate class size. However, with our TK programs, we absolutely cannot have more than twenty-four students in a class. If we do, um, if we do not, um, meet all of these criterias or even just one, we have twenty-five students. On average in our, or I'm sorry, twenty-five students in the class, it affects our LCFF funding. One thing that we don't have in this presentation that I would like to, to focus on. Is we have talked about, um, in the past, funding identified to help facilities for our TK programs. So last year, we basically added another grade to education. We, and I even say this, K-12 education. It's now TK-12 education. However, for an extremely long time, we have created schools and buildings for K-12. But we need to welcome and add in and prepare our facilities for our TK, um, students. And when we think about our TK students, I call them again, our little littles, their needs are quite different. From the majority of the other student population. So we need classrooms that meet their needs. We need furniture that meets their needs. We need restrooms available to meet their needs. And the state was planning to provide, um, funding to help districts. To be able to help with the facilities for, to welcome our little littles. However, the governor and his proposal proposes to delay that funding. Um, we currently do not qualify, not because of the proposal for that funding, because our programs are currently AM, PM classes. So that means we have an AM class, a PM class. The funding availability for the facilities is for full-day TK. Either way, we're gonna keep a watch on this to see where it goes because we may make different decisions in the future. And I always want to make sure that if we can find a way that we can be eligible for funding. Then we're gonna make sure that we bring that to you for direction. Okay, next slide. So this is a slide that was added in. Remember how I said that we're gonna add in a new slide? Um, and I, I saw this slide this morning and Billy and I thought, you know, this is a nice way, we think, to kind of summarize the governor's budget proposal. So when we're thinking of the opportunities for school districts related to the budget, it's a relatively quiet budget year. Because we don't have a brand-new plan to make for a different funding source or a different budget. We don't have, um, you know, four or five different COVID-related funding things that we need to plan for. It's almost, as I said, almost business as usual. So that gives us the opportunity to first break. To double down on our programs and services and our investments for, for students, to really take a look at that. Gives us the opportunity to assess, to evaluate what's working and what's not working. It gives us the time to strategize, to develop longer-term strategies to address our needs. And then it also gives us the opportunity to innovate, to be able to identify those partners so we can do great things for. Next slide. So that's the governor's budget, kind of in a summary. What questions do you have?
Just soaking it all in. It is a lot. It's a lot of pieces. Yeah, it doesn't stop being a lot.
So I, I guess I do, in terms of the VAPA. VAPA projections. Solid initiative said we had to allocate a portion, an X number of portion for VAPA, right?
You mean Prop Twenty-eight?
Prop Twenty-eight, yes. Now, what I didn't know was, because it didn't increase funding for it in any way. I didn't know where the money would come from for that. So is it pulling from other portions of the budget? Or is it? I mean, Grant, this is, you know, a year in advance, but. How is this, how is this going to impact us? You know, if we have to take from other areas that we're receiving funds from.
Based upon my understanding, and I'm also still learning that particular proposition. Um, it would, it should not have negatively affected other ongoing funding sources. What we do see though in this budget is it appears as if the governor is taking money from. Identifying money from other areas within the budget that was one-time money to fund these ongoing initiatives. Bad idea. Don't take one-time money to pay for ongoing. But based upon my understanding and when I read it in November. And then the little bit of information that I've received thus far, it should not affect ongoing money. Where it comes from, I don't know exactly. Um, my assumption is somewhere in the Prop Ninety-eight funding.
And, and, and then. So much like this balance, this budget is balanced based on, you know. Deferrals and, and shifting of funds from one, like, we've had to do that before, right? Everybody has to do that when they're doing multi-billion dollar budgets. So. In terms of what we're looking at. If we're still gonna be receiving a COLA of five point six percent. You know, net, or, or, I guess, yeah. Is that it?
We're still getting our eight percent, but what our true trace will be.
It's gonna be around five point six, right?
That was an example. So Billy and I will have to do the math, but it's, it's not gonna be eight percent.
Right, right.
I think that's the foundation.
We know it is gonna be less. Should we still continue to pump up some of our other funds? Like OPEB, OPEB Fund and our Deferred Maintenance Fund? Or do we have other funds that we can use to supplement, um, you know, our deferred maintenance?
If I understand your question, and let me check for understanding, is the question, the foundation of the question is. Should we continue funding our deferred maintenance and our OPEB? And yes, we should because we need to support our team members. And we need to plan for the future. We need to be able to make sure that we have, and I said this at the board meeting. Facilities that reflect how we feel about our students and staff today and tomorrow and next. facilities that reflect how we feel about our students and staff today and tomorrow and next year. So we don't want to be in a position where we have schools that don't support our students. What I think we do need to look at is how much we're investing in those funds. Right now, we have, as a big result of the one funding we received from COVID, we're able to take that extra general fund money that is not being, was not used, because we were able to use that COVID funding source, those other funding sources, and be able to kind of start these OPEB and deferred maintenance. But we're going to need to pay attention to how much we're going to allocate in our budget to continually fund it. So in essence, yes, we should absolutely continue to fund it, but we need to look at how much we're going to fund on a regular basis so that we can, we can afford it.
Are there limits, so we can continue to put in as much as we want?
Exactly. Exactly. And I, again, if I wasn't just clear, I advise us to continue to fund it. You know, as I am teaching my daughter, $5 in your savings account, just make sure you're putting some money in there, so you get in that habit. So when something unexpected happens, then we have that funding source to be able to support our students.
Especially seeing how first and Sturz grows over the five years. I mean, that's pension, not OPEB, but
Still.
Same thing.
I'll be interested to know, not right now, and you're not the curriculum, but how much are, what we're currently doing for VAPA fits with what the requirements will be? And I know we also have our VAPA task force to get some things, but I'll be interested, because we're already funding, right? Quite a bit of VAPA in this district that we're really proud of. And I'll be interested to know how much of an impact this will be and what the shifts will look like for the future.
Any other questions before we go to our last section?
I want to remind people, if they want to get any food, there's someone at the guest.
Thank you, Lena.
We appreciate you.
Okay. I'll pass this on to Billy.
All right, well, let's look at fiscal health. Three measures of fiscal health that we look at, balanced, looking at our income versus our expenses, our reserves, and then the reliability of our budget. The first measure balanced, except this. Actually, we didn't get the checkmark on this one, because currently our expenses are higher than our revenues. We are slightly deficit spending. Using a lot of our one-time money to support our expenses. So we recognize a lot of the revenue from these one-time sources in prior years, and now we're starting to spend them, so our a little bit higher. We are creating a plan to address these expenses. Except these. Reserves, we are currently meeting the 6% reserve requirement, the 2% statutory reserve, and then the board policy for the 3%. Anything above that, if below 10%, we have commitments and assigned. The reliability of our budget, any major surprises? No, we constantly are monitoring our budget and making revisions. It's where we learned the governor's budget study, governor's budget workshop. You have a positive and risk to our fiscal health. Using our one-time funds, cost of our salary and benefits. Enrollment projections, at the adopted budget, we projected those green bars there. So a slight declining enrollment over the next three years. The blue bar is a very recent enrollment projection that we are projecting slightly higher, but still declining enrollment.
It's like you can read my mind. I wasn't going to say anything. I was holding my tongue. A few, a few months ago, you all approved us having a demographic study done. And student potential, but the student potential means the potential number of students who may join our district because of the housing development in the area. We have those draft reports. We are working with cooperative strategies to go through the details of the reports, because we know our district intimately, and they don't. So we have to go back and say, oh, this is how you categorize this, and you categorize that. These projections here in the blue area are in line with cooperative strategies. And so we feel really comfortable with, with the blue bar, that we are definitely in declining enrollment. We'll be bringing that to you. Well, I'm comfortable with, I'm sorry, I'm comfortable with our projection that we're in declining enrollment. And so we, you know, as we have right here, we really need to create a plan to address our declining enrollment. When Billy shared that our, our expenses are outpacing our revenue, part of that is because we need to, I'll use Panous' words, we need to right-size. We need to be mindful of that, so that we're aware of the adjustments that we need to make to what we're doing and how we're operating, so that we can, I guess, respond to our declines in enrollment.
I think we need to see, not at this moment, but we'll need to see where that, you know, where that is, like, what the map is, because we know that we, I was just in a, you know, a classroom that is incredibly impacted, and there's not a lot of space at the school site to move around. And then we know we have other schools that are different. So I think being mindful of that, because, you know, like, where are we going to put a TK classroom? We have no room at some of our places versus
Absolutely.
the claims are.
And I think that your approval of the demographic study and how we're currently implementing our TK is, could set us up positively to be able to weather this, this change well. So if we stay on that path of looking at our data, doing these budget studies, and maybe we need a study on enrollment or something like that, so we can dig deep, so that you all have the information that you need to be able to help us to weather this storm.
So this is always a political one, but do we need to look at school boundaries now that we have census data?
Yeah, I think that's come up many times of what we need to look at.
And it's, it's fresh-ish. And it's, I know we did our election districts, but at the same time, we have new demographic data. Right, so always touching.
Oh, and we know yeah, we know we have kids that are more than that mile, whatever that ratio is of where we have to bus them. I know, because my girls bike the, fast the distance. So we know that we want to keep kids walking to neighborhood schools within a distance, so
That's what I was going to ask, it was like
Yeah, that all plays into this, but we have to look at where, where our pockets are, too, to be smart about it. But I think, you know, we've really not wanted to bus kids far, or make a lot of big changes, but I think
Westfield and the kids that are
All the way west Capitol, yeah, it's far.
That is a long trek.
It is. Yeah, that's one of the longest treks, that and, and Southport.
Southport on the Jefferson side.
Yeah, all the way down that bridge, right? Those are, there's two really big spaces, so in any case. Not to get off, but I do think it's, yeah, I think it's a valuable conversation. Thank you.
But a tricky one.
I think we have to face the enrollment data, like
Yeah.
It gives time, that definitely will need to, it's hard politically, but it's to right-size it, especially when people are saying, build more, like, but should we build more? We have empty space elsewhere.
Yeah.
Right? So.
Okay, one-time money. Here's a few of the main one-time grants that we have. The top two are some COVID monies that we're just wrapping up, SRTU should be done this year. ELOG will be done, most of it this year. Some of it will carry over to next year. SRT3, the green, the green, I should say, is what we haven't spent. That's the remaining balance, the dark blue, that's blue, is what we spent to date. SRT3 projects are underway now. Start shopping out pretty quickly here.
How many of those SRT3 projects have earmarked?
Can, can you explain earmarked?
I guess, yeah. How many of them have we kind of taken a look at and put a thumb, thumb tack on, saying, we're, we're spending money here, here, and here?
All of them, yeah. All of them.
So basically, when it says the 14 million, that money's going to spend.
Yes, 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 you all.
There's a plan for that.
I mean, the way, I'm just saying, the way it looks is like, oh, we've only
There's money there. Right, it's a project that has not
Hasn't been cashed in yet.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, but it is
Got somebody's name on it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So that, we did that in the last, the last budget cycle. But it, you know, kind of notes ourselves to onboard new people. It might be good for Clark Coffee to see what our budget was with those SRT dollars. So that you're, you're aware.
The next one, educator effectiveness, is a five-year plan. We're on pace to spend that exactly as planned over the next five years. We have the art/ music/ instruction block grant, our allocation is 4.5 million, which, as Muni just pointed out, is probably going to change, might change by 30%. And then the learning recovery block grant, 10.7 million, that's, that's new. We don't have much details on that yet.
However, have we received the allocations for those yet?
The first half of both of those were expected to receive both the arts/ music/ instruction block grant, learning recovery block grant, the second by May, or in May, so we should see all of these funds this year.
What's that red thing in the corner? The little, little dot? It's negative 600. Oh, that's approximately.
Yeah, so
Yeah. Is that what, no, I'm sorry. So, go ahead, Billy.
The first one, the expanded learning opportunity grant, it has a deadline of 6/30/24 for the majority of that grant. Some of it, 577,000 or so, we have till the end of the year to spend.
So we have to find the money for that?
After what?
I couldn't hear you, so I was trying to clarify.
Part of that grant, we have a deadline of this year, June 30th, of 23 to spend, that's 600,000.
Oh, okay.
Rest of it, we have until the end of 24.
Oh, it's an about, right? Not a kind of. Not a negative.
Tilde, there we go, that's in red. Red tells me
It looks That's what I took it as.
I see why.
It was something we added it, added to the thing. That's why I was like, wait a minute, hold up. What's happening?
Next slide, please. For the effect of rising pension costs. The blue is the CalSTRS cost, the blue bars, the vertical bars are the actual expenditures of prior years, up to 21, 22, and then the projected years from 22, 23 to 26, 27. Then the dark blue line horizontal is the rates for CalSTRS. As you see, the 19.10 is expected to continue for the next five years. The other one, the green, the dark green bar going left to right, is the CalPERS rate. And you can see that's expected to rise up to 29.2% in 26, 27. And the light green vertical bars show our costs and how that's expected to increase. So in 22, 23, we're right below 3 million, and by 26, 27, we're going to be getting close to 4 million for a cost of CalPERS.
Did you get an explanation as to why from this year to next year, we're projecting over a point and a half, well, two, two and about almost 1.7% growth in, in our STURS contributions?
STURS?
Isn't that the blue?
No.
Yeah. Blue, right? It goes 2.537 to 2.700.
Oh, that's the green one. That's PERS.
That's what?
That's the green one.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're hard, yeah.
It's hard to see on my computer, that way, okay. I was looking at the line that's intersecting with them. Okay, what, can you explain either you, why is it going up that much in one year?
I'd like to get back to you. I recall last year, we did provide a kind of the history and the rationale and why STURS rates increase at a certain pace, and they're actually capped now. That's why they're steady at 19. However, PERS has no cap on how high the rates can, can increase. And exactly, it's legislation. One thing that does factor in is, you know, how much is in that, that for lack of better words, the fund, the CalPERS fund. But we will research exactly why it's going from 25.37 to 27% and get back to you. So we have a clear explanation on that.
Right, this slide shows the cost of a 1% salary increase for next year, 22 or 23 to 24. Shows the total cost is about $700,000.
Good.
Minimum wage increase. So this slide shows in the orange, our lowest hourly rate. And then the dark blue shows how much we are going to be below the new minimum wages. Every year, we'll have to create a plan to address our compensation to meet the minimums.
How many? Well.
Do we have any employees that are at minimum wage?
I would, yeah.
Do we have? In the first year, I believe, we'll have one range. I think the next year, we might have two, you know, three or four of our ranges will not meet the new minimum wage requirements. What we show on here is just, you know, the next few years, but California law has, or California has a law that it will continue to increase the minimum wage to be able to support Californians. We need to be in line with that. We need to make sure that our, our pay schedules are appropriate.
Can I ask you a question? Does that trigger any increases in other positions? Because I know, for example, in these development centers, like, when you, there's, there's, there are certain wages that are actually tied to minimum wage, which then doubles the rates, right? Do we have any of those considerations, right? Are any of our salaries tied to, like, the supervisor must make twice as much, I'm not sure.
You know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, compaction things. So I, I don't know, that might not be an issue here, but I know on issues that trustee president and I have worked on in the past, there are compaction issues for the statewide, so not sure if that's true here.
Wrote those in the statute, so
Yeah.
You never get, you know, so it's basically for supervisors, right? So if, you know.
It has to be twice, three times, as much as
Number of dollars, was you have, you have no reason to promote.
I mean, I don't know if it's a contraction, contract issue or negotiation issue. But it then becomes, but it becomes a, you know, if your supervisor, like, as you go, and your supervisor's only made like a dollar more than, like, those are going to have to be conversations, right?
Yeah. Which classification it is that would be below minimum wage?
In my mind's eye, I see the range, range 22 and up. I don't recall what the classification is. We can get that to you. I think the, the overarching situation slash issue is that we want our employees to be with our district and that our district to be, have competitive salaries. And this is, I don't believe that this is an overnight conversation. And this is, I don't believe that this is an overnight conversation. Um, this, I think, is a long-term planning conversation. As we mentioned on one of the slides, um, we need to have some longer strategic planning, um, so that we can address compensation for our employees on a, our appropriate scale.
We're all for living wage, all of that. It's matter, we also need to kind of be, what are, what do we need to think about fiscally?
Absolutely.
What is, what, what does that happen, compaction issues or otherwise, like?
Yeah.
We kind of, we look at that, right?
Absolutely.
And, and versus a negotiation, you know, we want, not want to be negotiating and open, you know, what, what, be mindful of all that too, but certainly we know that, you know, we can all see the postings for In-N-Out Burger right now and other places.
It might be closed session to session because negotiations, but I think what you're hearing from the board is like, all of that actually plays into, and it sounds like we have not yet accounted for that possibility in our out-year budgeting.
Absolutely.
Right, so that, that, like, that's absent of our out-year budgeting. We're just assuming a certain classification, well, but we haven't had, yet had the conversation.
Exactly.
What does that mean?
Exactly. And so we're presenting this as, um, a risk to our budget, something that we have to address.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, uh, summary, um, we got the, the X for the balance, cause our projections are indicating that our expenses are out. We seen our revenues. We got a good check mark on the reserves and the budget reliability. Um, we're remaining conservative, planning for the future. And, um, we'll bring you some more details with the second interim report. Questions?
Yes.
I feel like in class.
Oh, no, it's a lot.
So we are in the negative as far as like income versus expenses. How does a school district make revenue? So we are not revenue generating, meaning, you know, when you think of a business, we can, we do that. So our revenue comes from our local control funding. That's our main one. We talked about that. When we think of, um, and I might term this a little differently, kind of balancing our budget. How can we, how can we, um, get out of this situation where our expenses outpace our revenue? Number one, and I'm so happy Yorgos, our executive director of communications, has implemented this. Get students to school because we're funded on our average daily attendance, which is our ADA. Students need to come to school because this is the place to be. Um, I think I said earlier today, I was talking to someone, I was like, being at school is cool. I don't know what slogans we can come out with, but students need to come to school. And the more students who come to school every single day, the more revenue we get to be able to support our students. Um, that's foundation.
And the struggle is post-COVID, we also want kids to stay home with their, so there's just legislative conversations about, that's why I said enrollment might be a better, because we've actually gone to this practice of not getting, not coming to school sick, right? So it's just, it's slightly a political problem.
And quarantine, once you've had it, right?
Right.
Just sit there and be sure to stay home for X number of days. So you're not just, you know, one day, right?
Yeah.
Well, we have a lot of colds and flus and everything going around right now. It's just a different, yeah, it's a different time than it was a few years ago where it was.
Now we're just more mindful of communicable disease, right?
Absolutely.
Whether it's COVID, whether or not it's just getting, we don't want our workforce to get sick because our kids go, then our workforce gets sick.
Exactly.
Right, like, then it's, that becomes a different issue, so.
So on our balance versus, our, our income versus expenses, um, I, I just, I don't recall a time when our incomes actually, our expenses. I mean, it was, I think it was close a couple of years ago, but I, I mean, generally speaking, we always operate into the red as long as we've had declining.
Absolutely.
But we.
Deficit ten for sure.
We, but we're always to the positive and we store away money at the end. Because of the COAs or because of the, uh, funding that we've gotten from the state to supplement whatever deficiencies that we've had.
So then it's okay?
I don't know if it's, no, 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 I, I, I don't, I don't know.
Look at my budget at home, and if I'm in the negative, I'm like, okay, how am I going to make ends meet? So I'm over here looking at, yeah, the budget for a school district, and I'm like, we're in the negative. Like, how do we make ends meet, like?
So, I mean, that's, and, and it's not unlike lots of other districts around the state, right, uh, Clerk Coffee? So you're right, I, you shouldn't, I mean, sometimes I lose sleep over it. But that's why advocacy, that's why CSBA, that's why when we go to legislature and we do things, it's the S R, we were totally deficit spending until the federal dollars came in. Right, there's just people advocating, it's really important for us to be involved in CSBA advocacy, cause that's, that's how, and it's just not a, it's not just a Washington problem. It's a, we, we underfund education period. Right, so, um, it's something, you know, as, as part of leadership, we talked about all weekend, um, at CSBA, at the board of directors, and we're super mindful of what this, that, what this really means, why we are pushing for enrollment versus ADA, cause it's a better, more stable revenue projection for most of our business officers, right? The problem is, is that the legislature believes we will be disincentive, you know, at least, is that right? Decent, uh, we, we, we lack the motivation to get kids. They will say, like, it doesn't matter, we'll let, we'll let Jackie stay at home for five months.
Didn't they used to go by enrollment and then they had to go back because people were padding the books?
No, I don't believe so.
Twenty years ago, there was a.
Always.
About that, and that's why they went to the, uh.
I don't know.
Swear to God, I heard.
Well, I wanted to come back to this point though too, cause I think it is important, cause you see the slide about expenses higher. But I want to go back to the very beginning, when you talked about a qualified budget, a positive budget. Can just reiterate that we have a positive budget.
We have a positive.
So if you can just explain how you have a positive budget while being in this place, I think that's an important thing, so that we know that we are, you know, it's, it's not as though we dropped the ball and we're going, oh no, where's our money today? You know, I think that's an important piece.
Can I take it or me? Okay. Remember when we talked about our ending fund balance?
Yeah.
And we talked about our ten percent cap, and, you know, I'm going to use my terms, our savings account. You know, we put that money away for a rainy day. It's called the REU, Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. It's on the list.
Yes.
Um, we put that away for these types of situations. So, um, just like at, at home, you're overspending, you need a little more, you're going to take a little bit out of your savings account, but you're gonna realize that there's some way I need to figure out how to, exactly. And so that's, we can ha, we can deficit spend and still have a positive certification because our ending fund balance, our savings account, it, our reserve for economic uncertainties is efficient so that we can weather the storm in the next few years.
And it's great.
While we create a plan, excuse me? Greater than, we've got six percent plus. Wise, wise, wise.
And we had our full audit, just for checks and balances, you know, we had that audit, we're positive, so. These are important conversations, right, and on it, you know, it's really alarming to see that, so just make sure it's.
It's not alarming, it's alarm. I was like, what is happening?
Everybody wants to foresee it, they're like, help us understand the public, and the public sees it as deficit spending, we call it deficit spending.
Yeah.
And then we have these public meetings so that they, if they ever want to come and hear about.
Or watch it later on YouTube. And I also want to explain deficits, deficit spending can be planned deficit spending. So remember, we have our one-time money, our reserves, our district ones. And let's say, um, I'll take our technology, um, uh, a part, commitment that we made for this year. Um, was it five hundred thousand?
Yep.
Um, and so you all approved us committing a portion of our reserves, our savings account, to the tune of five hundred thousand to support the needs of our technology program. Let's say our budget is, I don't know, I mean, use little terms, two million. For operating expenses, we're going to spend two million, balanced budget. But we're actually going to spend two point five million because we're pulling from our savings account, which we already identified last year to. So that's another, it's a planned deficit spending. And so, you know, it's, it's, as, you know, we're talking about here, it's not always bad, but we have to remain mindful of it.
And we have to also get down below ten percent too.
We do, yes.
Cause we're above ten percent now.
Yeah. And so we put it back into, um, in preparation for our programs. We make those investments in our technology, into our strategic plan, um, into our buses, um, to be able to purchase more buses. We, we put aside for those, those needs that we have to be able to take that opportunity to support our kids.
And also when we budget, we assume we're fully staffed, and we, we know that we're not. While we plan for those positions, we, we actually, but we know that there's churn, that those teachers, like just staff, they churn. So when those aren't filled right away, you save a little bit of money until you hire a new person.
Yeah.
So there's just a lot about cash flow and cycles that y'all are managing, that's why I'm not.
It's true.
A fiscal person, I just create the framework. Create the funding framework, so don't mind me, but yeah.
So, can I next steps comment though, since we're just on this one, is, I know that to becoming is the staffing ratio conversation. And so we'll just have to, and maybe that means shifting, not just adding, or what that will look like, but just so we're cognizant of. Um, you know, we heard from custodians and others who are saying, I have a bigger job than others, I can't keep up. And so, just so we're mindful of that, because I know that that's coming too, and, and that we're.
And that, for that particular point, it is, you know, taking us some time to develop these, a formula for us to really base those decisions on and making sure that it's, it is sustainable. And what, like, looking at the big picture, even though all of us, I think, are, we're gonna, we know what's needed from the heart, and when we talk about this, it's like, okay, I have my emotion hat on. But then when I look at the budget, I have to have my fiscal hat on, and that's kind of the, the hard part. Um, I think another piece, and, and Vice President Wong brought it up, the importance of, of advocacy at a higher level. I was at the CSBA Superintendent Advisory Council, which is about twenty superintendents across the state who share what's happening, districts of small, medium, large, suburban, urban.
She, I reappointed, we ratified her this weekend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, but one of the things that we talked about is thinking about our dashboard presentation that we had last week, and one of the areas on the dashboard is chronic absenteeism. So you, you see that very low on your dashboard, but just what you all discussed here about the reasons why the chronic absenteeism rate has increased. But if you see it on the dashboard, it's the same thing, but look at where we are, the, the why is not behind that, and the same to, to your part, point Clerk Coffee. When you see that, the why is not behind it. And so I think for us, and one of the, the points of, of having these discussions is, what does that tell us that we need from our legislators? You know, what, so that advocacy.
State and federal.
State and federal, like, how do we get that point across? And I, I, I found that value in having a unified voice of what we're seeing in districts across the state, um, are facing. But then these conversations and being able to talk to other superintendents or boards of how are you messaging those things to your community, because it's about building trust. And we want people to believe, number one, we have good intent, but we're also good stewards of, of the money and the, the, the trust that, that we have in the roles. And so that communication piece is also something that we're working on too, to make sure our narrative is what the public has, instead of maybe narratives of, of experiences that are no longer the reality of what we're doing in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Sure, next slide, next steps. Next steps in our budget development, um, we have meetings with, um, staff, um, the ball sites, and staff admins. Operate everything we learned about the governor's January budget. And they will incorporate, uh, main vice for the government's budget. We incorporate the, the local control accountability plan. Bring you the second interim report. And we'll have the adopted budget for twenty-four to you in June. We're good next. Another, of our annual budget cycle, uh, the next time we talk about budget will be for the second interim report in March. So here's our log text.
Can you go back a slide, just so we're prepared? So.
What's coming?
Yeah, no, no, it's just like, just for, just conversation while we're here together, you open up. We adopted June budget, based on, based off the budgets, the governor's May revision, but there's negotiations between May and June fifteenth. But we're still adopting a budget based off outdated information. So publicly asked, why are we adopting, revising it forty-five days? Why didn't we plan? Right, like, some people may say, oh my gosh, you guys don't know what you're doing, because we just, it's July, and now you're doing a forty-five day. It's because the legislature negotiates so late, that then we have to come back and figure out what the real deal was.
Yeah, that's what we should lobby them to stop, cause it is.
Oh, you did, like, there was a proposition by June, I mean, there was, they don't get paid.
It's horrible.
They don't get paid, I mean, there was, like, there was, there was a whole proposition. So.
Are we mandated to have an adopted budget by June?
Yes.
By the end of June.
But they don't really tell us what's in it.
What we have to work with until.
Uh, yeah, June, well, it has to be signed, so it's like by June thirty, it's always a June thirtieth. Yeah.
But what I'm saying is.
Correct.
Yeah. We gotta come up with a plan.
Yes. Alpha fake about, alpha, alpha, it's not a fake.
In layman's terms, we gotta think about what we're gonna get, not knowing what we're gonna get.
Correct.
There you go, you got it.
Forty-five days later, it's the real budget.
And once they tell us what you have, then we can, then we have, okay, now we can fix it.
That's the reserve too.
Cause it's correct. Correct, and that is the reserve.
Why we have to borrow from other funds.
Yeah.
Got that, people? Yeah.
It's very confusing. It's like, cause a lot of people think, oh, you don't, no, it's not that, it's just, there's billions of dollars being negotiated.
I just don't understand why we are mandated to come up with a budget before a budget is passed. I'm just, that's just me, and that's, my head is still trying to, it doesn't. It's like having a unicorn.
A unicorn?
Where's it, what, what is it gonna be? Is it a horse, is it a zebra, or is it a unicorn?
Right. It's a hippopotamus.
Exactly, that's what you end up, you know.
I heard you say you're going through the demographer report, you're doing all of that, those pieces. Wherein here might that come to us, and there may be some bigger conversations in terms of, as we alluded to, possibly with our shifting with students and whatnot, but when do you think that we will at least hear the beginnings of that tomorrow?
Absolutely. Um, realistically, probably March.
Okay. Oh, that's the other thing, we don't really know the number of students we get. That's the other thing, so we have to do a forty-five, cause it's butts in seats. Remember, so we really don't know, it's, it's all.
Okay, we have forty-five days, so if it, we get it on June thirty-first of July, we have enrollment and we'll have our kids in August. So we have like two days.
Something like that, that's why.
We prefer everybody to enroll right now on the website. Um, but March, you think?
I'm thinking March, okay.
So in terms of our staffing ratio that we're doing.
Incentivize for pre-summer enrollment?
Holy shit, I hope we're creating the formula for staffing ratio, not based on what we. What is needed to, to provide a, um, accurate need assessment, right? Like, the need is there, without, we can afford it, is a whole separate conversation. I hope the formula that we're using for establishing has no tie to what we can afford.
Well, one of the things we're looking at is, and, and we'll go back and we, um, make sure that's clear, is, is looking at, it could be A. If we did A, it would be this. If we did B, it would be this. So, and also, uh, really looking at what are, you know, taking the time to have done some research about what is, what is a, a staffing ratio, what is it for a certain position? So, um, trying to have some type of baseline to be able to say, to your point, how do you determine what the need assessment is? how do you determine what the need assessment is? What's, what's the number that says needs? If you ask different people at different sites, you'll come up with very different answers. So, trying to balance all of that, trying to say, well, what would make, be reasonable in terms of that?
Are you doing a formula-based, formula-based staffing ratio? Or is it, I guess, I guess, I'm not understanding, because a formula is just plug the numbers, right? You're not looking in necessarily needs, that's just the numbers, plug it. Once you get your formula, then you can assess other things, other factors that go into. So, I'm, I'm curious as to, are we doing, are we addressing this in a formula-based approach? And then we can also have additives to it, um, which means, you know, there's certain priorities that need to happen, or, um, we have to triage in certain areas based on funding and, and, and so forth. But, I'm, I'm just curious, i- is the ratio of funding, is it, is it, is it just a, a formula? Or is it have built into it a, a, a component that is, you know, what we can afford?
The next step.
Yeah.
So, we will, I, I don't wanna get us too far into that conversation without having all the data in front of us. Um, but I'm glad to hear those questions, so if it's not that, or if it's not that clear, that gives us time to either ask some more refined questions. And, um, as we, you know, prepare to present, I think the other question, and maybe we can talk about this on Friday, is because these, at least I, I hope you feel that these types of intensive sessions on one topic is beneficial, um, and we need to have more so we can do a deep dive, so that, you know, I feel it's my responsibility, our team feels it's our responsibility to give you the information that you need for these decisions in a way that's comprehensible, but that may take time. So, we may need to spend some time Friday talking about calendar, and every, we can do whatever you need. It's just another meeting. It's just another meeting. Every day we need to make sure that, um.
A meeting on top of a meeting.
Right, like.
What committees are you on?
Forty-five.
I do think. It is. It, uh, it is important, though, to look at.
Some people are.
Scheduling, and to your point earlier, of capacity, so that we can also mentally function to have that conversation.
Exactly. So, we'll.
Okay.
Carve out some time as we think about what's happening in March, what that might look like for your calendars.
Is there pre-work that the budget sub should be thinking about with you? As we go into this?
Yeah.
Anything we raised?
No, not right now. Um, you know, our next step, and, um, is definitely looking at our, our, um, projections and um, our actuals, as Billy shared, we're working on our second interim, and it's July one as of, and, and expenses and revenue as of literally today, the thirty-first, so we'll go through that, and with the subcommittee, in next month, at the end of next month, we'll review the second interim report and be able to answer some questions, um, so that we can dig deeper into what we need.
Um, and this is just for the record, as you are doing the due diligence and the research around ratios, I'm just gonna double down on equity of students, right, and campuses, what that really means. Right, which is in part and parcel from relooking at our school boundaries, like, it just is, right? So, I'm gonna double down on that, since we have just been a, a leader and all that.
And when do we, when do we have our next budget study session?
Next year.
Next year?
So, we have our next budget, we do a budget, we have had the history of doing a budget study session annually. However, our next budget report is March.
And then the budget subcommittee will meet.
In February.
February.
Our finance.
Yeah, the finance.
Financial.
No, policies tomorrow.
Policies tomorrow. So. So, are we also going to be looking at, because I'm just looking at the email that we got recently in regards to the health aides? Are we going to be looking at that as, including that in our budget? For having additional health aides, or looking at that?
So, I think that will be part of that staffing formula conversation, because we will be coming with, here's, here's what we can do, and then the, the, what we will need from the board is the direction of, do we gonna do all of it? Are we gonna do half of it? What is it that we're gonna do, but first we wanna bring to you, here's what, to, to Kobe's point, what, what could it look like? And with some, uh, recommendations, and knowing that, um, how do we make sure that we are, um, prioritizing? And there's needs everywhere, I guess that's my point, that.
Across all classifications.
Every classification has a need, and so, what would be helpful for us as we're planning that? Are there any priorities that the board would like us to look at, is there something you wanna know about one classification? First, just, you know, whatever information or things that you would like to know, the more we get that ahead of time allows us to make sure that the information that we are providing is meeting your needs.
Here's one thought, we have a, um, little school task force.
Yes.
Have a staff task force. We have an equity task force. We have a math task force. And might have some others, and some of those, I imagine, I don't know, because we're not in those, and keeping a back here lens for us, might have financial implications of what their recommendations are. And so I just wanna make sure too, that everyone's talking. It's really where it comes down to, because when I, you know, you hear, oh, you know, we're working on some ideas and have these thoughts, you know, and you think, oh, budget, you know, and that for our peace of mind too, that there's a lot of conversations happening.
Along those notes, I, I wanna, I will trust staff and cabinet to have that ten thousand foot view, because you have your pulse on all the task forces, all the classifications, the numbers, equity, and not to mention alignment with our strategic plan and our L cap.
Yeah.
Right, there are lots of things for alignment that we spent a lot of money and time in, and what does that look like? So, I'm gonna just say now that, I, I, I'm gonna trust that staff is like aligning all that, um, because it's versus kind of us maybe being, I'm not saying how, how they're a distraction, being distracted, because we've set out a plan. We paid for it, we've, you know, kind of planned it out, just like, so is all of that, like, just, I, I just want, I, I wanna kind of double down on, we invested in those things and just wanna trust staff to re-review those things that we've kind of planned already in recent years.
Yeah, my count, yeah, that definitely wasn't a lack of trust, it was a government of, of making sure.
No, and I, and I appreciate that, because that is, um, what we're working with, with staff and the strategic plan, and what we'll share next, uh, week, and what we've done, and, and really starting with putting systems and structures, and how, there's so much that we wanna do for our kids, how are we gonna do it, who's gonna do it, and when? Like, what's gonna happen, what, what's, remember our strategic plan is five years. So, what's gonna happen in year one?
Yes.
Year two, you know, there, because we need it all now, we do, but what's gonna happen now? So, really trying to make sure that, one, we can provide that coherence in the system so that there is not the, a sense of angst, a greater sense of anxiety, because there's always gonna be that, because we serve kids. So, how do we take our, the resources that we have, look at our data and the needs of our students, and go, we're gonna start here with this group, for this school site, wha- whatever it is, and really looking at, at, at that, so.
And also, just to President, I think Kirby's last point is like, the feedback, like, everybody is probably doing all the things, right? Everyone's all the things. And we will be ten times deficit spending.
We'll be like, you can't do this.
Yeah, because it's not our job.
So, like, reality checks, because I think people participating will say, like, the district didn't listen to us, right? Like, I think it's important to say, yes, and, like, value, and there's a sequence, and, and scope, always scope and sequence, right? Like, yeah.
That's, I mean, if we just think of like, why there's the equity multiplier conversation, how did that even?
Do you wanna know?
Come a thing.
I'll talk to you later about.
Well, it's part of, probably one of the, a committee I was on with Superintendent Thurman. Black student achievement, like, some of these conversations are really like, how are we looking at our data? And how are we supporting, you know, students in, in ways? Your point of how we were able to support our English learners was so intentional. How do we represent those models that have shown, when you do this, good outcomes come for kids?
And you stick with it.
Yeah.
You just gotta stick with it, it's, when we get distracted, like, over here, over there.
So, uh, the one, the question I've had is, is, we've heard from several parents um, come up at board meetings and make the conversation that, you know, we're lacking in noon duty supervisor and campus aides and campus security. In terms of that, is that simply a inability to fill positions already budgeted? Or is it a situation where we really don't have enough to do this effectively? As well as, how do we ensure that the security of our campuses are being, you know, are being taken care of? We've, we've had, um, you know, uh, I can speak for myself. I've had parents come up to me and, and say, like, it's, kids refuse to go to the bathroom in, in, in our schools because there's things going on in the bathrooms that shouldn't be, right? And they're afraid, they're just afraid, and no kid should have to do that. So, you know, does that mean we're, we're not having enough of our budgeted positions filled? Or is it that we need to have maybe a few more positions allocated in order to make sure that, you know, we have a proper, you know, at least line of sight of what's going on? You know, make sure that our kids are feeling safe and secure.
We will have that information, that kind of detail, when we do that report, like, how many, you know, that, that may, just a scenario. Wouldn't do it for every single position, but, you know, what, how are noon duties, what has been the form, like, what's been the formula? One of the things that I have asked of HR is, when we're looking at trying to look at a formula, what do we have right now? I mean, that's, to me, that's our baseline. Whatever's in schools right now, that's the baseline, because that's what we have, that's what's been approved. And then really using that, to your point, to say, one, I would, I don't know, maybe you all will have that history of how, why was that the number, I, I don't know? But, is there an additional need? And then that conversation that then comes into budget is, how many more would, would, what is gonna be the determination of how many more is needed? What does that look like? Does that mean, uh?
Is our salary competitive?
Right, is that salary piece, right?
Do we need to allot a certain, you know, portion of our budget to increase the salary for this specific position? Because it's not.
Right, getting those.
Higher, we've already got the positions allocated. I'm just saying, that's kind of where I'm going with that, it's, you know.
And using the data.
A, a principle out there with a stop sign, right? Like, doing crossing guard.
And using the, the data, um, I think we shared that, maybe it's since February of last year, HR has been doing interest and exit surveys, and so they're doing a, uh, a report to capture what is it that people are also telling us as they're leaving? Are they leaving because the compensation wasn't at a level that they found met their, their life needs? Were they leaving for another reason? So, wanting, when I say look at data, I'm also talking about anecdotal data, is it, is it cost? And one way you know that is by asking people why they came, because we do entrance surveys. What is attracting you to come to us? And then for those who are leaving, why are you leaving?
Is there a way that we could tap into possibly like, a community service? Instead of.
Volunteers?
Like volunteers, I mean, we have CHP Academy, cadets. Don't they have to provide, I mean, don't they have to do community service? Wouldn't that be something that we could tap into as a resource? And they're not walking around with that, with the badge or anything, they're cadets. Get that community building relationship where they're with the kid, the youth, they start to build that bond of not all police are, are awful mentality, build that relationship. I mean, this is, it's, it's something that could possibly work, and we're not paying.
It's a, a good idea, things we can, you know, definitely look into, that is.
Or the, our retire, our retirees.
Yeah.
Our retirees who want to give back.
Who wanna give back.
Or in the community, just like an hour to your day, you crossing guard or whatever, so.
As long as it doesn't, like, take the job of a C F A employee. We have to be, that's, so some of the parents, like, fellows that hold the crossing guard signs. It has become a conversation of go to HR and sign up.
But I'm saying, we have what we have. But, yeah, just having that, like, uh, ability to build on, off of our community and, uh, assist in that area, I think that would, it's beneficial. I mean, even if it is a yard duty of helping during the lunch hour. In the morning rush, and then they leave, and then they come back. I mean, if it's like something that's short, just to give that additional assistance.
Yeah.
Especially at school sites where you're getting the, there's not enough.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, we heard that last, we heard that last.
Yeah. Well, just a thought.
Yeah.
All right, okay, this was a lot of good stuff, and we're gonna end it now, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. We're, uh, close to our time, and thank you all, this was really helpful and important. Yeah, Scott for you.